Good evening. The time is seven o'clock. Time to officially start the meeting. I would ask you all, please, rise for our prayer and pledge of allegiance.
Would you pray with me, please? Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this day. We thank you for the opportunity we have to gather and do the business of the city. God, I pray that you grant us wisdom and guidance tonight in all the decisions that are made. Father, as always, I pray that you protect all those who place themselves in harm's way for our benefit, and we pray these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call or roll, please.
Jay Kaufman.
Here.
Paul Kaiser.
Here.
David Hunt.
Here.
Jim Lamb. Mayor Parsons. Alderman Young.
Yes, here.
Mandy Young.
Here.
Curtis Sigler.
Here.
John Conroy.
Here.
Does anyone get a chance to look at the minutes from the last meeting? Can anybody see any corrections?
There's no changes. I move to approve.
Second.
Call or roll, please.
Jay Kaufman.
Yes.
Paul Kaiser.
Yes.
David Hunt.
Yes.
Alderman Young.
Yes.
Mandy Young.
Yes.
Curtis Sigler.
Yes.
John Conroy.
Yes. That carries. Minutes are approved. All right, our new business. Our first item is a public hearing for a special use permit regarding a request for application for church use on Broadway Road. We'll first hear from Director Taylor.
Mr. David Bray with the Bray Firm, representing Badril Hassan or Hussain, who is with the Bartlett Muslim Society, is requesting planning commission approval of a favorable recommendation for a special use permit to allow a church use to be located on the east side of Broadway, just north of the Ellendale five-way intersection. The subject property is Zone RE residential estate zoning. The Bartlett Muslim Society currently has a 20-family congregation. They are currently holding worship services in a shopping center at 4210 Auterea Road in Bartlett. It is my understanding that if this new facility is built, it will serve around 150 families. According to Article 5, Chart 1 of the Bartlett zoning ordinance, a church use is permitted in the RE residential zoning district with the granting of a special use permit by the Board of Mayor and Aldermen. Uses surrounding this proposed development include residential single-family homes in the RE residential estate zoning district to the north, a post office facility in CG general business zoning to the southwest of this property, a youth behavioral treatment center within the RE zoning district to the east, and residential single-family homes that are within the RS-12 residential single-family zoning district to the west. With this application, the applicant has provided a conceptual site plan for the future development of the 8.244 acre parcel of land. The conceptual plan includes a 5,000-square-foot building that may be constructed in three phases, reaching up to 15,000 square feet, a 165-space parking lot, a playground, and a stormwater detention area. Ingress egress from the property is shown on the plan. The location of signage and lighting and those sorts of items are not shown. Staff has reviewed this application and recommend a favorable recommendation with the conditions listed in the staff report to be forwarded to the Board of Mayor and Aldermen. Should this application move forward to the Board of Mayor and Aldermen, and the special use permit is granted, the applicant would then come back to this commission with the site plan, and then they would move along to the Design Review Commission for a plan for landscaping, the fence, exterior lighting, signage, and any other aesthetic materials. That would be then approved or disapproved by the Design Review Commission. Thank you.
Does the commission have any questions for Director Taylor?
Yes, I have a question. Did you find anything relevant to the infrastructure for the area that we should be aware of? Is there any issues that you know of?
Well, a lot of that is... Yes, that is covered under the engineering conditions. They would need whatever the deal would be made out with the city of Memphis, whether they need an underground stormwater detention area or not, so that would require their approval.
Got it. Thank you.
Any other question? Go ahead. As far as the traffic study is concerned, will the five-way stop be a part of this traffic study?
Well, traffic could lead to that direction, and I would believe that it would be.
Okay.
Other questions for Director Taylor? All right, thank you. Is the applicant present? Please go forward. Name and address for the record.
Yes, sir. David Bray with the Bray Firm, 2950 Stage Plaza North. Start off with, we're in agreement with the conditions. Want to make the point that Ms. Taylor made before, this is a conceptual plan. We've got a lot of details to work through as we move through this, but we're in agreement with all the conditions and the traffic study. I believe we've supplied a traffic impact, but we'll do a more detailed traffic study as we move forward, you know, if the special use permit is approved. But we've got a lot of questions that we can't necessarily answer tonight, because at this point, we're just finding out if this is something that we can go forward with. So, that's where we are, and the applicant would like to speak a little bit, too, and then we'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Thank you, sir, for all of you to give us an audience, so I...
Excuse me, sir, for a minute. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Badril Hussain. Currently, I'm living in the 1078 Woodland Glen Drive in Cordova. I just moved, I lived in Bartlett for 20-plus years, from 2003 to this February. For some personal reason, I had to move, family reasons, but I still am holding the position of the Board President of Bartlett Muslim Society. It's a nonprofit organization, and at this moment, we are congregating, as mentioned earlier, in 4210 Alshuria Road. But this community is growing. Primarily, this is mostly comprised of business, people who are entrepreneurs, who are contributing very positively to our community. About, I would say that the projection is more people are loving Bartlett, and they like the security and the safety of Bartlett. That is one of the main reasons. And currently, we probably have approximately 100 families from Bangladeshi origin who are doing, involved in various businesses and call Bartlett their home. And they don't have a place to worship. The place where we go is not large enough or doesn't allow any activities at all, so very constricted. So, it is especially thinking about our children. This is not going to work out in the long term. So, that is the main reason that we were looking for a suitable land where we can build the facility and with the total concern in mind about the community and the impact of it. We, one of the things that I want to share, I have written to the city about the traffic issue, which is a concern, of course, but the traffic issue is like, our prayers usually are just before dawn, so no traffic issue at that time. And the major prayer that we congregate is at the night prayer, which is approximately, on the average, 8:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., that area. So, those two will not affect the traffic congestion, we believe, and at the same time, there will be plenty of parking. And so, we cannot address every concern you might have, because I am not a technical person like Mr. Bray, but we are eager and willing to comply with any recommendation that you may give us and try to comply with every rules and regulations in the city of Bartlett. And we want to be a positive impact in our community, not only with just praying there, but being an integral part of this community. Thank you.
Could I ask a question, please? If I understood you right, you said your services are before dawn and then 8:00 to 9:00 p.m. at night?
Like, we are required to pray five times, but congregation prayer, highly recommended, is the early morning prayer and the late night prayer. So, early morning prayer happens, it has to finish before sunrise. So, even if we come, we pray, and by the time we reach home, the sun has not risen. So, that, I don't think, will impact traffic. And the other prayer that is very much recommended to pray in congregation is the night prayer, which in the winter time comes at 7:00. In the summertime, it can go as late as 9:30. And these are not large gatherings, because these are like, very devout people will come, not a large congregation. So, we don't expect large congregation. Only time that will be some larger congregation is during the month of Ramadan, but that is, again, after sunset. Because we usually like to break fast together in the month of Ramadan, just get together, have a meal, and just share company of our fellow Muslims, and so that is the only time, one month during the year, that we will congregate and try to be there. And we have a little bit, slightly longer prayer, but that, everything, it starts after sunset and then goes on for a couple of hours, sometimes two and a half hours. But, again, we are conscious of the fact that it's a residential area, and we try to maintain quietness, and, you know, just because of the culture, our prayer doesn't include any music playing or any instrument or something, and we are not intending to use any, like, loud noise-making, any kind of mic or anything for our congregation. So, I, we fully expect that it will just be very positive presence in that area. And it will allow us to, all these families who are kind of disjointed because there is no place to gather, it might be a very positive impact for our children, especially.
Well, I'm trying to understand, and maybe I'm not clear, but the use of this facility, if it's built, you're going to use it before dawn and in the evening only?
During the weekdays, absolutely, that is the thing. During the daytime, hardly two or three people may come and gather and pray. So, that is, because it's a workday, people are not coming to the facility. Over the weekend, yes. Over the weekend, we might say, okay, we will have a small potluck lunch or something on Saturday or Sunday, something of that nature, not on the weekdays by any stretch. But during the weekdays, business days, it's basically very early in the morning and late in the night. Not too late, but definitely after sunset. And only other expected thing is over the weekend, if we gather, get together for brunch or lunch during the weekend. Yeah, that is definitely one of the things in the card.
Can I ask a question, please?
Sure.
When do you plan on installing a school facility there?
School, no, we don't plan to do any school facility at this moment, no.
None whatsoever for the future?
No, we have Islamic school in Bartlett, so that's Pleasant View School. That's a, so that is a large school, about, I think enrollment is about 600 and growing. So, our parents who decide to put the children into Islamic school, they put in that Pleasant View School, but majority of our children go to the public schools.
Thank you.
May I ask a question?
Sure, ma'am.
So, I know you all read over this, and you're okay with what they're saying about the pump station, the new water retention, anything to do with underground and the sewers and everything? If it, I know this is early, but if it came to that, you're okay with all of that?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay.
And actually, when we were handling this, cleaning up the ground, and there was some environmental concern, we did bring in all the required specialist, environmental specialists and everything, did the study, and based on that, we just stayed away from certain areas, just. So, we are very environmentally conscious, and as I said, we, from this facility, our only thing is that just to, so that this community is kept together, okay? Because the biggest concern is, especially with all this technology coming in and everything, the risk of losing our children is so high. It's just, they, we, so that is the main reason, that like, okay, let our children be, at least get some, keep in touch with our faith and culture, and just be a little bit more family-oriented. That's the biggest concern.
Any other questions?
I got a question. And I understand, we're just starting this process. What information do you have about the moratorium that Memphis has put on Bartlett? How does that figure in for the plans down the road? John may know this. I don't...
Okay, so, currently, this site is soured by a pump station on Broadway that does lead to Fletcher Creek. However, what has been consistent with the city of Bartlett for years is any time a development is made on a piece of property, whether it's a subdivision process or a special use permit, we require sewer to be extended upstream. And so, this particular, about where you see the middle of the property, that black line, which is actually a drainage line, I think that's probably really close to where the pump station is. And so, that pumps, the developer would be required to remove that pump station and sewer it under the railroad tracks via bore. And at that point, the sewer would be going to our north basin. It would not be going into Fletcher Creek. And so, the, with that understanding, with that engineering condition, this site would not be sewer service in the future into the Fletcher Creek. It would be into our north basin, and they would be responsible for moving that sewer lift station, running a sewer line, boring it under the railroad track to where it connects to...
What does something like that cost?
The bore would be the most extensive part of that, and, I mean, off the top...
I know, the accuracy, I'm not, just, is it a million dollars or is it 20 cents?
No, it's not a million dollars, but...
It's not 20 cents.
I know, I just...
But it is under the railroad, it's under the railroad, so that's going to increase the price of it because of the...
I'm sorry, and who pays for that? Who pays for that?
The applicant does.
The helper does. That's one of the engineering difficulties.
Why does it matter?
Okay, so we don't have a cost at this point, is what you're saying. I understand the concept. I'm just getting ahead of myself, and I know that. That's a big, big thing.
We just did a bore in Piperden, under the railroad, similar type situation. And largely, it's going to depend on whether or not the railroad, if you read the other condition about the 50-foot right to expand, and whether or not they require the bore to extend up to there. That makes a difference in the length of the bore, which obviously makes a difference in the price.
So, we do have quite a bit of, I think this is probably the tip of the iceberg. We don't have a lot of information based on how we're sitting here talking about the situation, which makes it difficult to understand the end road. But I keep asking that, because I want to make sure we're not missing anything for the moment. Okay, I'm good.
Mr. Chairman, question?
Yes, go ahead.
David, real quick, kind of more on an engineering basis, drainage on that property. Over the years, heavy rains, that area tends to basically pond, essentially, with a good quantity of water. I mean, it's a problem. What have you done engineering-wise in your studies to this point? What's your plan as far as alleviating that to ensure that that water doesn't now get pushed onto the adjacent properties and gets properly, you know, sheet flowed off to the proper drainage?
So, you know, again, we're at a conceptual level. I suspect the problem is a pipe under the railroad that's too small. And so, our basin may end up having to be bigger than what we're showing there. We've got plenty of room to expand it as we need to. But based on that restriction and what the inflow is, will determine the size of that basin. I would anticipate that that basin is probably going to end up being about 70% bigger than shown. That's still outside the parking. We still have lots of green space up in that area. It should not be an issue.
All right. Second question, Kim, you might be able to address this. If not, any other properties in the immediate area, in the residential zoned area in there, have come through in the years past, applied for, been granted special use permits for either house of worship or other purposes, or is this the first?
This is the first that I'm aware of.
This is the first? Okay.
Other questions? Go ahead.
Yeah, a follow-up question for Jay there. Jay's question, regarding the water, stormwater. Now, there's a, just make sure you understand your answer on that. So, you're saying that you would move the water to a bigger pipe and try and move it across the railroad track, underneath the railroad track? Is that what you're saying?
It goes underneath the railroad track. My suspicion on the drainage issue, and John may have a better answer on this, is that I suspect that that drain pipe that's under the railroad is smaller than it needs to be based on the level of development that's happening.
Now, you're sure that basin can hold that? Because it's a pretty large basin already, and it's pretty filled. Is there enough capacity there to hold that?
Well, that's where I'm saying, our detention basin will likely get built, likely get bigger so that we can store it. I mean, obviously, we can go out at the rate of flow that that pipe can handle. So, anything above what that pipe can handle is where our storage requirement is determined.
And that basin is owned by the railroad? Is that right?
There's a pipe underneath the railroad that's owned by them. The detention basin will be on us, and that will be part of our property.
So, your basin, okay. I see what you're saying. Thank you.
Are there any other easement situations associated with that property?
We've talked about railroad expansion, there's a drain underneath there, and then we've got the sewer issue. I think that's it.
Good.
We should have, Jay?
Yeah, one more quick question. The conceptual plans you provided, there's two things I want to point out here. Number one, the amount of parking that's shown. Is that estimated on the average traffic that'll be using the house of worship here? Or is that based on zoning on the square footage of the buildings? That seems like an awful lot of parking, a lot of asphalt being laid down on the ground for a 15,000-square-foot.
That is peak. One of the things when we had our pre-application with the city, I mean, obviously, the public roads out there cannot handle any street parking. So, we've got to be big enough. So, that would be in anticipation of the biggest events that might be held. Wedding, for example, that's held there. That would be the maximum onto that. And again, this is a conceptual plan. That may go down some, but we didn't want to come in here. And I could have shown you, you know, for a 5,000-square-foot building, 20 parking spaces. But they're looking to ultimately build this building up to 15,000, and that would not have been a realistic view. So, that would be the maximum that at some point we may need on this site.
You mentioned earlier that the building is strictly conceptual and that it will change by the time... Are we talking drastic change, where you'll need to come back on a repeated basis for approval? Or are we talking this is where the footprint is, and there'll be minor changes?
This would most likely be where the footprint is. I don't imagine us moving that. But we don't have architectural plans at this point. So, obviously, if the special use permit goes from this board to the Board of Mayor and Aldermen and is approved, at that point, they would start going with architectural plans, and we would firm up civil plans. And then we would be back in here for you guys, for site plan approval, and DRC for building material approval. So, no, if you're asking, do I anticipate that the building would be on the north side of the parking lot? No. I don't think it would change from where it is right now. Right now, what's shown, I believe, is 100 feet wide and 150 feet deep. Could that be 96 feet wide and 162 feet deep? Yeah, sure. The architect may move some things around on me like that. But by and large, where it's shown, that's where it would be.
Back to the parking lot size, real quick, to address. The size of that parking lot, again, that's a lot of traffic. Again, traffic seems to be the key issue here, the potential for traffic here. You mentioned special events, such as a wedding, I think you used. That, for a parking lot that size, if that's the anticipated quantity of traffic for events like weddings and other events like that, the traffic flow coming through there would be drastically increased, both in and out. I don't know how often weddings occur or plan to occur here, things like that. It looks to me like the drive entrance, I noticed there's only one drive entrance on here for in and out. Obviously, there's going to be a widening. I assume there's improvements that are going to be involved, engineering on if it's curb and gutter, if it's still remain asphalt.
If it's curb and gutter, it's...
Obviously, all that involved. I know you mentioned that there's a, that there's a proposed traffic study to be done on that. Is that right? Do we have any kind of preliminary information on what kind of traffic we're looking at here? I mean, the size of the parking lot is what, it just really stands out to me. I'm like, good gosh, how much traffic you gonna be pulling through here? You know, at one time, the gentleman said only two or three people might show up in the mornings. I hear that, and then on the converse, I hear for weddings is why we have a parking lot size this big. So, I'm kind of, I'm a little confused here as to what we can expect. And we really need to get this, the traffic study, I think, will help a lot. I really do. I think it will answer a lot of questions. The infrastructure looks to be a challenge, I'll put it that way for you, both sewer and drainage, and I'm sure water is an issue here. I really think there's just a lot of what-ifs that really just aren't being answered at this point, and no fault of your own, or just not to that point. With that, if there's any other questions here?
Sir, may I speak just a little?
Certainly.
Yes, David, of course, he volunteered this information at the wedding. We never even, this is the first time we are thinking about it, okay? So, the thing is, no, because we have facilities in the city. Memphis Islamic Center is located in Humphreys Road in Collierville, and that facility was built specifically for that purpose. When we have a wedding or something like that, unless we go to a community center and others, we go to that place. At this moment, for sure, we don't have plans to host a wedding or that kind of function. But the thing is, over the years, what we have found, that sometimes a family of three brings three cars and stuff like that. Sometimes it does happen. And so, it is like, we told David that it is better to overbuild in the parking lot and let there be empty spaces instead of trying to, people parking in the street, because it is not a, it is going to create a much bigger problem if somebody parks on the street. But we don't expect to use that by any stretch of imagination in the near future. But, again, just, we will follow any, we are aware of situation like, I was part of the institution at 1065 Strackford Road, where, of course, once or twice, the city fire code came and cited us because of the overcrowding, and was, we were cited that we didn't have enough parking. So, we kind of learned the hard way, like, okay, you guys don't build enough parking, because parking is expensive, very expensive to build also. So, the thing is, we probably overcompensated. Isn't it, David, a little bit?
It's possible. Yeah. And that's one of the things that we will have, I would imagine, and I've had a preliminary conversation with Dr. Lipinski about doing the traffic study, is that, you know, we'll use that to taper down that number. But again, I did not want to come in here with a plan that showed 30 or 40 parking spaces and then come back to site plan with a plan that had 80. I would rather go the other direction.
Another question.
See, I had the same concern, having that many parking spaces and only having one driveway. Because if you had some incident that happened there in that one driveway, you could potentially have a whole parking lot of people that couldn't get out. If you had a fire truck come in there and pull in that driveway, they couldn't get out without a second drive. And there, again, that just puts more people at risk. And I would ask the applicant if this does move forward. I know the comment says a sprinkler system will be required if the building's over 5,000 square feet. I believe your intent is to build a building that's 15,000 square feet. And I would just ask, it would be better to add that sprinkler now and add to it than in retro have to come back and add a sprinkler system in a building you already have? So, I would ask, even if it's 4,800 square feet, that you go ahead and install that sprinkler system with your riser and everything in it. That way, all you have to do is add on to it.
I think it's an excellent suggestion, sir. We will definitely go through that. It's an excellent suggestion. And not only for complying, but also for safety purpose, yes.
Exactly.
And we're certainly amenable to adding another drive.
Okay.
I believe we've got to move the one that we've got on there farther north. That was one of the engineering concerns. So, we'll have to figure out location.
But again, I think for the record, I think the traffic study will tell a lot about this project and how it... this project and how it moves forward.
I know we need to move on to the public hearing part of this, but I have some real concerns, obviously. Number one, you bought a piece of property and you cleared it without knowing if you could do anything on it. And now we're hearing a whole lot of conceptual ideas, but we're asked to make a decision based on somebody's concept that nobody's clear on, I don't think. So I mean, I think there's going to be a lot of questions and a lot of concerns, and you'll have an opportunity maybe down the road to figure all that out. But there couldn't be a worse intersection in Bartlett.
Shippensburg County.
To try to place a place of worship with a hundred and seventy-six car parking lot. Because whenever you do it, it's going to be a problem coming in and out of there. So I just wanted to lay that out before we got any further and just let you know at least where I was thinking at this point. Thank you.
Commission, have any more questions for the applicant?
No, sir.
Seeing none, thank you. All right, we'll now start the public hearing. Here's the way we'll go. We will allow people who are speaking in favor to speak first. People can speak for up to three minutes for a total of twenty minutes for that side. And then we'll ask anybody in opposition who wants to speak. Again, the same rules. Person may speak for up to three minutes, up to a total of twenty minutes for the opposition side. Before we start that, Melissa, do we have any correspondence on this issue?
We received six letters in opposition to a favorable recommendation and no letters in favor.
All right, thank you. All right, now we're going to start with, I said, everybody, anybody who wants to speak in favor of this application, please come forward to the microphone. Name and address, please.
Yes, sir. My name's Brittany Whitehead. I live at twenty-seven thirty-one Brag Lane, just across the way. I'm an Army veteran. I spent ten and a half years in the Army, and that included a deployment to the Middle East, which included time in Iraq, Jordan, Kuwait, and Syria. At no point did I have to travel as long as these folks are having to travel to exercise my Christian faith. And I would find it deeply disappointing to come home to the United States of America and have a municipality stop my fellow American citizens from being able to act in the free exercise of their religious faith. I would be heartbroken. A year ago, I would not have been able to come to this meeting because I was deployed. It would be so heartbreaking to hear an unfavorable movement moving forward. I would also like to point out that I'll be in Bartlett permanently. My mortgage is sub-three percent, so y'all are stuck with me. I'm not leaving. My husband is from here. I'm still a military spouse. My property taxes are a quarter of my current mortgage, and I'd like us to look across the state line at Horn Lake and see the money that Horn Lake had to spend defending a case they were always going to lose for building a mosque. So I'm a Christian. I drive by St. Anne's every single morning. The traffic is what it is. The traffic will be what it is, and I'm sure that there will be decisions made. But the exercise of free religious belief is integral to the United States of America and the oath that I swore to uphold and defend. So I'd like for y'all to think about that, and thanks for letting me speak.
Thank you. Anyone else wants to speak in favor of the application?
Good evening.
Name and address, please.
This is Mohammedullah. I live in four-one-one-five Coorsview Cove, Bartlett, Tennessee, three-eight-one-three-five. Our respected Aldermen's and my dear neighbors, good evening to everyone. Actually, I was listening about, everybody was concerned about the traffic. And Mr. Badrul Hussein, what he mentioned about the traffic, and you all are concerned about the parking lot, there's one hundred and sixty-five parking lot in there, so maybe there'll be a lot of car in there. If we, right now, we are praying in forty-two-ten Ultra Ria Road, and hardly six, seven cars come in a evening prayer, and three cars come in the morning prayer. So that's our two main congregations. So I think we put the most, we talked with the engineers, and he said, if you keep a lot of parking, it'll be better for future if you need to do something. But we never thought it's going to be an issue. But normally, we have like ten to fifteen cars in the evening congregations and two or three cars in the morning congregations. So I'll request everyone to think about it, that's just a number, and that was a conceptual plan. It's not actually, not that many cars going to park over there. And, you know, we will request all of you to think about our feelings. We have a, we need a little place to pray, to worship, and, you know, that will bring peace on our mind and can work for the community, and we have a big business community here. We want to be a good neighbor and will, you know, asking your favor and your love from everyone. Thank you very much.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? All right, seeing no one, we will move on then to those who might want to speak against. Again, the same rules apply. Each person can have up to three minutes individually with a total of twenty minutes. So whoever wants to speak, go ahead and come up and go ahead and get lined up, if you Go ahead. Name and address for the record, please.
I'm Charlie Goforth, and my wife, Ann, is here with me. We live at forty-two thirty-eight Broadway, about a third of a mile north of this site. The Bartlett zoning ordinance permits a church as a special permit, but it's the responsibility the applicant to, and I quote, "provide evidence at the hearing of such special permits which evidence must establish satisfactory provision and arrangement has been made concerning nine specific items." I'm going to talk about three of those items: traffic, utilities, and storm drainage. Currently, this is an eight-point-six acre property. It's a zone residential estate is everything. Basically, up Broadway has been developed. I've been there thirty, since nineteen eighty-seven, so I've seen a lot of development occur in there. You know the intersection there. Oh, you've got to tell anybody it's five-way and they know what we're talking about. And any change that's going to intensify the amount of traffic, we're against. We're just against it. And I'll tell you why. Right now, if you have eight houses, you're probably going to have sixteen cars. We're talking about tenfold, a hundred and sixty-five here, increase. And you know churches or any kind of church. We're not against any churches, but this is, this location is what we're particularly against. This is a two-lane roadway. The garbage trucks stop on the roadway. And when you say there's no, the traffic on the road, since the academy's been there and the school bus parking has been put there, there are several times a day that traffic backs up a third of the mile to my house. And it's in the dark in the morning before dawn in the wintertime. I want to clearly point that out. And so it happens over and over again. There's about seven thousand cars a day on the road right now, according to the Tennessee Department of Transportation, and it's not designed for that much. You've heard about the sewer moratorium, and I have neighbors been told he can't connect to the sewer. And then now we're saying that they can connect. But I won't talk about the water more than anything else. This property is a stormwater basin. January the third of this year, there was five to six feet of water on this property that covered over two-thirds of the property. Everything that, where the parking lot is shown on this site plan was under deep water, and I don't mean a little bit of water. And he's correct, the pipe that goes under the railroad is undersized. Generally, that's the case. They were put there many years ago, and it's holding the water back. Everything from the ridge at my house, a third mile to the north, over to Oak Road to the west, comes down Broadway, goes under Broadway or comes down the east side, goes directly across the middle of this property, then exits through that pipe. The basin is the property for all practical purposes. I don't know that you've got enough land area to actually build anything here. And there's a compatibility issue too, but I'm going to stop and let other people have opportunity to talk.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Carrie Bristow. I live at four-one-one-seven Broadway Road, directly across from the planning, and I want to address the flooding and the traffic. Before the sun comes up, that is when the traffic is absolutely the worst. We cannot get out of our driveway as it is. It's backed up so far, you can't even see it. And it's going both ways, really, but, I mean, the five-way causes, I mean, everybody knows it causes horrible traffic. When pulling out of my driveway, you can't see people coming from the direction of the ninth grade academy. I've been hit pulling into my driveway because the five-way is so horrible, spun into my driveway while my two-year-old was sitting in the backseat. We've had dozens of animals dead in front of our house due to all of the trees being torn down. But aside from that, the flooding, like he said back in January third, it had flooded so bad that nearly the entire property was underwater and had flooded over into our yard. There is pretty much no way that they can convert that into something that is not going to be underwater at least part of the year. It's a terrible place. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Ronnie Altrey, forty-three seventy-five Broadway Road, just down the road. I've been there thirty-four years, lived around the corner. I've been right in there like forty-five years. So if you want to talk about traffic, I can tell you about it. And we're not going to tell you anything you don't know. Mr. Young said it right. That is the worst possible place in the city to put anything. But I think we could all use another church. That's not the problem. But sometimes, you got a railroad right there, and I don't know how many times a day that train goes through there, but I'm backed up all the way back to Youth Villages trying to get home and back down Broadway a quarter, half a mile. So I don't, and I think you opened up a can of worms because what's, you know, churches grow. No matter what they tell you they're going to do now, what about five years from now? When the church doubles, which the church will. So, thank you.
Hello, my name is Jeff Jensen, four-seven-zero-seven Buckhead Circle, Bartlett. I live in the back of the Shadow Lawn area. We have to drive right through there every single day to try to get our daughters to school every day and then to get to work on time. It is already chaos. And I think it's, this has been stated, but it cannot be stated enough. The traffic is already backing up when it's still dark outside before the sun is even rising. And then as we head into the winter months, this morning, the sun rose at six-fifty-five a.m. This is a pinnacle time for traffic. So obviously, there's going to be a huge impact to traffic in the morning, for sure, probably in the afternoon as well. Also, anyone that is even attempting to make this a religious issue is being patently dishonest. If you live back there and you deal with those traffic patterns, you know this is specifically about that, nothing more. And I don't appreciate anyone that says anything different, because that's the truth. If they were going to put in all these there, or they were going to put a synagogue or a Catholic church, it would all be inappropriate for the area. If there were to be a single residential family that wanted to build a house on there, that would probably be obtainable. We could probably handle that traffic flow. And if any of y'all wanted to do that, I would be glad to have you as a neighbor. But the entire idea of this, plus, it's also patently dishonest to say that you're building a church of this size and there's three to five cars coming, but yet you're putting a parking lot in that size. Clearly, the goal is to grow it, and they should grow it, and I hope they do grow. I just think there's probably a better location. Thank you.
My name's Alan Campbell. I live at seventy-two thirty, Periwinkle Cove, which is the extension of Luella, which is right across from this property. And a couple of things, I'll change things, a little what I had here, but to address, I completely respect all those things that were said for the people that were for, and I'm all for religious freedom, and just like he said, this isn't about religious issues. And we talk about driving by St. Anne's every day, but St. Anne's has six lanes of traffic in front of it, not a five-way stop with two lanes. It's a whole different location. I personally just don't think you could actually try to find a worse location than this spot right here. The other thing is, I wonder, you know, it should have been never bought in the first place, knowing that it was zone residential. And whether it's up to the real estate agent, the buyer, it's their responsibility to know that. And now they just have to deal with that. But another thing, just looking at, I'm going to take a different approach. My wife and I bought our property thirty-one years ago on Periwinkle to build our house to raise our family, our two sons. My wife passed away about seven years ago, and after she passed, my boys are grown now, thirty-one and twenty-six, and a lot of people even said, you know, you're going to sell the house and move now? I didn't like, I said, no. I said, this is home. I love this area. We got great memories here. One of the reasons we lived or picked that spot was because it's kind of a rural country setting. You feel like you're in the country, but you're still within technically the city of Bartlett. We have very narrow streets, if you've ever gone through there. Our streets are our sidewalks, talking about the Fanta, Luella, Periwinkle Cove area. I often refer to our areas, when I tell people where I live, Elendale, if they don't know where it is, I say, well, have you ever driven through the five-way? And immediately, I get a look of frustration, anguish and everything on their face. Oh, yeah, I know. I say, well, that's Elendale. I said, but we love it. And I often refer to it as our little Mayberry of Bartlett, for some of you that've been around a long time. When we built, if you built over there, you had to go to the post office even to get your mail. It was, they didn't deliver mail. And that was another thing that was part of it. But we have people that walk those streets, golf carts, walking pets, kids on bicycles, and we already have a problem. And not stepping on anybody's feet or blaming anybody, but many people here can say or probably admit, they've cut through Luella, Fanta to get through because of the five-way. And this is only going to make it worse. It's going to, the traffic and logistics there is a nightmare, and the special use permit for the church would only make things worse in every way and certainly not be beneficial or enhance the community. The other thing is...
Sir, excuse me.
Yes?
Your time's up, please.
Oh, is it? I apologize. Okay, but we also like to have our deer and our wildlife and everything that's around there too, the green field.
Hi, my name is Leslie Lord. I live at seventy-three eighty-seven Memphis Arlington Road, just a few houses down from the proposed build. I had a long thing typed out, but I just wanted to share with you guys that my grandparents built my house in nineteen sixty-four. My mother was raised there, I was raised there, my husband and I have since purchased it. We didn't inherit it, we chose to live there. We love our house, we love being outside, and a commercial bill will just completely change the feel of the area, the traffic in the morning and all of that stuff. So I just urge you to decline the permit. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Jonathan Lord. I live at seven-three-eight-seven Memphis Arlington Road. Mr. Hussein, I hope you get a mosque somewhere. I hope you are a great member of our community. This isn't about this. This is about what does it mean when you start to change zoning? What does it mean that for two hundred years, Bartlett has been a residential community with rules, with rules we don't bend at just a whim? The first reason you can't change this, you can't issue this permit, is because of that intersection. Mr. Hussein said it's not a traffic issue. We know it is. It's out my front porch. It affects my everyday life. Mr. Hussein, if he stood out there for ten minutes, would see near misses again and again. He'd see car wrecks again and again. It reminds me of a Hot Wheels track that my nephew has where the cars are supposed to crash into each other. But even those have two tracks, not five, and they don't have a railroad on top of it. You're asking for disaster. We all know that today. We all know that today. He hasn't seen the thousands of people every morning. If he would have said, hey, the middle of the day is when we've been there, we might have been like, okay, yeah, but the morning and night, that is the worst times of day. Since they cleared out the land, I have been flooded with pests. I know that sounds crazy, but because we're gonna move the swamp, the naturally occurring area, we are gonna see a spike in that. The deer, just this morning, I had a herd of deer in my front yard. I love that. If we build a parking lot there, that's not gonna happen. The second reason we can't issue this is because when you buy a home in Bartlett, you do it because you expect to have neighbors, not a parking lot next door. My family were directly impacted by a permit being issued, a residence being changed for a parking lot. Can I tell you, that now, we can't use half of our house. If you go home tonight and a car pulls into your driveway at 2:00 a.m., it's gonna wake you up. You're gonna wonder what in the world's happening. I have a parking lot that aims at my house, and dozens of cars every day now shine their headlights into my home. I've had to build new fencing, I've had to move bedrooms, I've had to lose all my privacy. I can't sit in my backyard anymore because a permit was changed. These are the things Mr. Bray's not gonna tell you. And the truth is, Mr. Bray and his company have made their careers and probably built their house off getting councils like this to change the rules, to bend a little bit more. We all know the story. If you give a mouse a cookie, it won't want a glass of milk. If you give their associates this moment, let me tell you, there are a lot of mice waiting for a cookie nearby. Who wouldn't want to build something right there where so many cars are? Who wouldn't want to put another convenience store, another smoke shop in? I don't need that. I need neighbors. I need people that are gonna wanna build me up, that are gonna wanna do life with me. Please, please don't open the gateway. This is such an artery to Bartlett. That's why there's traffic there, because this is literally where the blood of our town pumps through, where the buses unload every morning. I beg you, consider not just the impact it would have on traffic, but the impact on each and every neighbor. Thank you.
Dell Livingston, 4210 Broadway Road. Our home's just north of the site. I'm here to share my concerns regarding this special use permit. My family has been residents of the neighborhood for eighteen years. As you're aware, the residential homes are, the RE District was established for residential homes on large lots and intend to preserve and protect the low-density, open-space character of the area as stated in the zoning ordinance of the city of Bartlett. We're opposed, my family and I are opposed to the special use permit for the following reasons. Negative traffic impact, this has been beaten over the head, I know, but Broadway Road is a narrow two-lane road. No shoulder, no sidewalk. The entrance to the site will be off of Broadway, just north of that five-way intersection that's also exacerbated by the railroad that motors have to navigate. This development proposes a gate entrance with limited stacking, which could propose further traffic issues. If the gates are closed, or other traffic problems causing the backup on entering the property. There have been many times when the traffic has extended beyond our driveway a quarter of a mile from that intersection. If all of this is adding 165 vehicles into this small residential road will negatively impact the health and safety of our residents, increased traffic could push further drivers onto, frustrated drivers onto even smaller side streets, Luella and Fanta, for example, where children play and they can create lines of traffic that could block residents and emergency vehicles from getting in and out of our driveways. There is no shoulder. You can't get, if there's a problem, that's gonna be a big, big problem. Other item that I want to talk about is the, property has a history of flooding, which you've all talked about as well. The heavy rains, I've got photographs, if anybody cares to look at those. I did send an email, which these were included. So the majority of the property had, if it was full growth, they, is primarily clearcut. The drainage is further impacted by the run, this will be further impacted by the runoff of a 15,000-square-foot roof area and about an acre of asphalt, imperious. This is gonna have a significant impact to the adjacent properties, potentially causing flooding and other undesirable outcomes of landowners and natural wildlife that our neighborhood enjoys. There is an additional concern that the property was, has not been maintained since its original clearing, and has allowed to grow up out of control, which causes increased health, sanitation, and safety issues for residents and their homes.
Sir, your time's up, sir.
Thank you.
I'm Harry Wilson, and I'm at 7285 Luella Avenue. I've been there for forty-nine years. And when traffic backs up at the five-way, then the Luella and Fanta becomes like a freeway. Thank you. It becomes like freeway, and Luella and Fanta is not pavement marking to separate the traffic, and last time, the traffic's taken up most of the street as a whole, and forced another traffic into the people's yard, man included. And in wintertime, it gets to be a problem because it does rip the yards up. And I think what y'all talking about here, or we're talking about, is this is just gonna add to a bad situation already, and we know that situation is gonna continue to get worse as more development goes on. So I'm strictly opposed to this addition of traffic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Randall Cole, 5998 Dickery Grove Lane. Part of residence for thirty-eight years. I don't know Mr. Hussein, any members of his church. I don't know the lady that wants to express her religious freedom, but I do know one thing. I like these words up here, "In God we trust," and Mr. Young, you prayed to that God right there. Mr. Young, Muslims do not believe in God. They believe in Allah as their god. They do not believe in Jesus, whom you pray.
John, we need to stop this.
Sir, sir.
Sir, you need to stop, please. You need to have a seat, please.
I wanted to say one thing.
No, sir, your time's up, okay? Thank you. Sir, you need to have a seat, please.
Read the first two commandments of the Ten Commandments. That's all I ask.
Sir.
Thank you very much. Read the first two commandments.
Sir, your time's up.
Thank you. All of my time's done. Thank you very much.
First of all, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for your community service to our great city. My name's Robbie Jordan. I live at 4669 Narcissus Drive, out near Rivercrest High School, or School, excuse me. I make this intersection a lot. I'm no traffic engineer, I'm no drainage engineer, I'm no electrical engineer, but I trust you guys with buildings in this city. But I could not, I'm a member, I'm a deacon, at the Bartlett Hills Baptist Church, and I could not go home tonight and go to sleep. And I, and I can't hear good, so I don't know who's mentioned what so far. But I could not go to bed tonight and not step up here and mention that I stand for Almighty God, and for what He stood for us. And I don't think we need no more churches in our city. We need to fill the pews of the ones we have. And I go to Bartlett Hills, I welcome these people here, anybody here, to my church. Let's fill our churches and don't build anymore. Thank you for you, for you, sir.
All right, thank you. That concludes the public hearing. Would the applicant like to come forward? I'm sorry, sir, we're out of time. Would the applicant like to come forward and address any of these issues that have been raised?
No, ma'am.
So we have heard, of course, that some legitimate concern from the Bartlett residents, our neighbors. But again, this, we might have just putting this too many parking lot there have conveyed incorrect idea about our congregation's size. And depending on the situation, again, it's your call. We need a place to worship and congregate. And we, if it's suggested that, okay, we don't, in growth in size, say from five to 15,000, we can consider, we can go back and we can see whether we can settle for a smaller facility with a smaller parking lot, and taking care of all the engineering challenges as recommended. So we can definitely, we're willing to that step if necessary. Instead of planning and say, we can just say, we will not, if there is a document we need to sign that we won't grow more than 5,000 square feet, and the appropriate amount of parking for the 5,000-square-feet occupation, we can strictly keep it a worship place instead of doing any other big social gathering there. So at this moment, that's all I can share, because again, I, my decision, I cannot take a decision on my own, because it's, other people are involved. But that is one thing we can consider, that we will limit it to a 5,000-square-feet facility, and not go above that, and basically tone down our future plan. We'll look for other land for, if we need to build something bigger. As I said, that there is a school already, which is within Bartlett, that has already enrollment of 500-plus children, and we have a huge facility in Humphreys Center where a lot of our social gatherings takes place. So definitely, those are the things. And again, just to reiterate the fact that in the morning, as I said, that the most devout of the Muslim, they go to the prayer, maybe two or three cars. I don't think it will impact that much in the morning. But again, we understand the concern, and we will do anything in our power to follow any recommendation, but the ball is in your courts, sir. You are the ones who will decide. But we'd really appreciate if you consider our side. And again, we are not engineers, we are not, we didn't have the, doesn't have the, we don't have the experience that whether this is the right land or not, so we didn't make the decision based on that. We just like the location, because so many of our families live nearby there, so many of our families. That's all.
If I could add, there's been a lot of discussion about traffic. And one of the recommendations from staff in here is a traffic study to be done. The normal process is this would move from Planning Commission to Board of Mayor and Alderman. I would like to ask you guys to allow us to get that traffic study done before we go to the Board of Mayor and Alderman, rather than after the special use permit is approved, so that we can see what we're talking about. Now, at a bare minimum, I've been coming up here for thirty-two years, bringing cases up here. Alderman Young, I think, has been up here for thirty-two years with me. And, you know, thirty-two years ago, the five-way was a bad intersection, and the five-way's a bad intersection today. And absolutely nothing has changed to make it any better. This will, at a minimum, bring another lane of traffic to allow some relief, another lane of pavement, curb, gutter, sidewalk, all things that are not out there right now.
Quiet, please.
This is how we improve the roads out here, is with development. It's not the city of Bartlett, and in very rare occasions, this has been the city of Bartlett going in and improving roads. The traffic impact study may make suggestions for the five-way that we can't live with, and it may stop at that point, or it may make some that we can live with and go forward. But I would ask that you guys allow us to do that before it moves to the Board of Mayor and Alderman.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that this be continued until a traffic study can be done and brought back to us. There, I think we've heard overwhelmingly from everyone that they believe there's a traffic problem. I believe there's a traffic problem. And I think the best thing for us to do, the responsible thing for the city to do, is have those answers. And quite frankly, there's a lot of questions about your whole plan. I mean, all we've heard about is concepts. This traffic study will, I think, probably answer a lot of those concepts for us. And I just think, rather than trying to make, move this along to a Board of Mayor and Alderman to have to go through the same thing, I think we continue this until we get those answers, and then, and then this body can make a recommendation of whether it's a favorable or unfavorable recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, that is a motion.
I'll second that motion.
Comments from commissioners? Is there discussion on it? Sure. Mr. Goforth brought up a couple of, an interesting concept, and maybe Ms. Taylor can help us. How do we get clarification to go along with this about supposedly nine separate items that should have been addressed, which we've talked concepts, which was brought up versus factual stuff that's supposed to happen tonight? Ms. Taylor, could you help me with that?
They can address some of those items in their, when they come back in their conceptual plan.
But is that supposed to take place now or later? It sounds like if this...
Well, they're coming back because you've not...
It talks about now, at the ordinance, supposedly.
And it's actually not specific in the application itself. If you have the application in front of you, there's a checklist, and it's more general than the actual ordinance. So when they come back with their traffic study, they can show some of those things along with it. And besides that, when they come back, I think it was like receptacles and signage, that sort of thing, where those are gonna be. Those are typically addressed more with the site plan itself and with the designer review commission's plan. So it'll, it'll show you the locations of those things on the conceptual site plan, but the details of all of that would have to be approved by the Planning Commission and the Designer Review Commission.
So it would have been inappropriate for them to have done their part to take care of the traffic study before we got to this point?
Or you could have did a recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman, because they make the final...
Sure.
SUP approval, not this commission.
Gotcha. All right, we have a motion to carry this over until the completion of a traffic study. Is there a second on that motion? Any further? Call or roll, please.
Jay Kaufman.
Yes.
Paul Kaiser.
Yes.
David Hunt.
Yes.
Alderman Young.
Yes.
Mandy Young.
Yes.
Curtis Sigler.
Yes.
John Conroy.
Yes, that motion carries. All right, so for the benefit of the people who came tonight, and we appreciate you coming out, we will, the applicant will conduct the traffic study. We'll get the results of that traffic study, we'll hear this thing again some future date.
All city meetings are public, and our agendas are posted on the bulletin board and on our city website, cityofbartlett.org, under Minutes and Agendas. So all public is welcome to our public meetings, and our agendas are posted at least a week beforehand.
I was just, yeah, I'm not gonna try to do anything till they get out of here.
like, okay, we're here.
Let's move on with our next item. We have a construction plan application for Union Depot, Phase 2B, located at 6896 Highway 70. Kim?
The applicant, Mr. William Sawtell, with Parker Estes and Associates, on behalf of the developer, Blue Sky Communities, is requesting Planning Commission approval of a construction plan for Phase 2B of the Union Depot residential mixed-unit development. This is actually for the subdivision of a 11.369 portion of the 73.9-acre parcel, and this is for the subdivision for...
And this is for the subdivision for 22 townhomes and 50 detached single-family homes that will be constructed in the future. This is the former site for the Tennessee Baptist Children's Home, and the site is located on Highway 70, just north of the intersection of US Highway 64. The property is currently zoned residential single-family RS-10 and neighborhood office OR-1. In December of 2021, the Board of Mayor and Alderman approved special use permit to allow plans to be moved forward for the residential mixed unit development project. In September of 2022, the Planning Commission approved a construction plan for Phase 1A to construct Union Depot Drive and Talcott Lane, which connects to Highway 70. In January 2023, the Planning Commission approved construction plans for Phase 1B, that was for the apartments, and Phase 2A for 48 townhomes. Within your staff report, there is a table that references the phasing plan for this development. The construction plans presented to you for this request, which is Phase 2B, include grading and drainage plans with a stormwater detention pond shared with Phase 1 on common open space Lot K, a sediment and erosion control plan, and a sewer, and a sanitary sewer plan. Access to the subdivision will be from Talcott Lane connection, which links you directly from Highway 70. Staff has reviewed this application and recommend approval with the conditions listed in your staff report.
Mr. Chairman? Have any questions for Kim?
Mr. Chairman, I would like, if this is an appropriate time, I'd like to remove two conditions from the engineering conditions.
Sure, go ahead.
Item nine and 11 are redundant, so I'd like to remove item 11 completely, change item nine to drainage and alley shall be public.
The applicant pick up on those? All right. Any questions for staff? All right, will the applicant come forward, please?
My name is Williams Sawtell with Parker Estes and Associates, 3460 Ridge Meadow Parkway. We'd like to ask that y'all approve the conditions as amended just now.
Yeah, sir, you're in agreement with all the conditions in the staff report, as amended?
As amended.
All right. Anybody have any questions for the applicant?
I do have a question, and this may go back to Director Kim. Some of the properties that I'm noticing here only have a width of like 23 feet.
Yes, sir, those are townhouse units, those are all connected in one building.
Okay. Okay, so that would be like one long building then?
One long building.
Okay, all right. I have a question.
Yes.
Hey, help me visualize what's going on here with common open space B, which is on the far, I believe that's on the east side there, behind lots roughly 109 through 117. You got a 30-foot, lack of a better word, alley.
Well, it's a buffer strip, it's a common open space, there's some trees in it we're going to maintain, and it was part of the conditions.
That's where I'm going. Who is "we"? "We" are going to maintain.
The developer is going to not remove those trees.
So...
And it's common open space, so it's going to, it's not going to be...
Anybody cutting grass, maintaining anything? I mean, it sounds to me like what that translates to is, yeah, we're not going to cut the trees, and we're just going to leave it alone.
Well, maintenance will be responsibility of the Property Owners Association.
Of the HOA?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so there's no planned walking trails or anything in there? Because I'm envisioning that the backyard of Briarwood subdivision, I think if y'all didn't build it, and somebody put like six-foot privacy fences, maybe an arrangement of some split wood. But what I'm trying to get at is, at the end of the day, are we going to have essentially a tunnel of six-foot privacy fences going down here with nobody maintaining what's in between?
The landscape plan, they did show a walking trail down that, didn't they?
Well, if there's a walking trail or something, it could be maintained.
Sam, what happened to have a master plan?
She had a master plan.
I mean, the reason I bring it up is I've seen too many developments happen where, you know, common open space means neglected landscape is what it translates to. For, you know, I'm trying to massage it as best I can, but that's what I really just don't want to see. And I'm trying to do this in defense of the neighbors that are there in Briarwood and the backyards of these lots, 109 through 117.
So that common open space B, that is landscape plate I, it's not shown on the plat as is. It is a condition of approval that that landscape plate is shown on the recorded plat prior. We did it with Phase 2A prior to it being recorded, so we just have to copy that condition over to this plat as well, which was not a problem. With that landscape plate, it does integrate an existing tree with supplemental plantings. It does call for a walking trail back in there, and it will be maintained by the common opens, the homeowners association.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Other questions for the applicant?
I have one.
Yes.
This is, I guess it's not important, but it's on my mind, so I'm going to ask a question. Has the management changed with the kind of continuity of management? Is Mr. Grant still a part of this? Because you usually see him in these situations, so...
Yeah, Mr. Grant is still a part of it. Mark Matthews is his director now.
I'm the director of Grant Home Land Development.
So he's still kind of be involved in this project?
Extremely.
Okay. All right. It seemed like it's been kind of his baby. I like that.
Excuse me?
It seemed like it's kind of his baby, so I kind of like that.
Well, we're very excited. We feel like it's going to be a very transformative project, and I've known the grant for many years, and they have a 40-year history here in Bartlett. And so I believe that the landscape strip we were talking about there is adjacent to a larger buffer that actually has a walking trail that teases through the whole thing. And we're kind of excited that we're having enough positive feedback that we can go ahead and start the residential side, so we can have a very, very diverse offering of home size. A lot of these would be very expensive homes, adjacent to some density, which is done correctly is how it's supposed to work.
I appreciate it.
Any other questions?
Yeah, last question. We expect y'all to start going vertical with this project. Y'all moving a bunch of dirt, moving dirt here and there, but I haven't seen anything coming up yet.
Well, we got a lot of very expensive infrastructure going in first before we can go vertical.
We'll see some very big pipes next week.
Yes, there's some 11-foot diameter pipes being delivered soon, so...
Anybody, any other questions for the applicant?
Are you now moved to approve?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any comments from commissioners? Call or roll, please.
Jay Kaufman.
Yes.
Paul Kaiser.
Yes.
David Hunt.
Yes.
Alderman Young.
Yes.
Mandy Young.
Yes.
Curtis Sigler.
Yes.
John Conroy.
Yes. That item carries. All right, our final item is a subdivision final plan, same address. Kim, would you come forward?
Again, the applicant, Mr. Williams Sawtell, on behalf of the developer, Blue Sky Communities, is requesting Planning Commission approval of a final plan for Phase 2B of the Union Depot residential mixed unit plan development. This property is located at 6896 Highway 70, and it is the former location of the Tennessee Baptist Children's Home. It is within the RS-10 residential single-family zoning district and the OR-1 neighborhood office zoning district. This is a conjunctive request from the application that you just reviewed, but this is for the final plan of the subdivision. It is 11.369 acre portion of the project for 22 residential townhome lots and 50 detached single-family home lots. The townhome lots will range from 2,692 square feet to 6,138 square feet. The detached family home lots will range in size from 5,400 square feet to 10,629 square feet. Some of the lots will have rear garage alley access, and some will have front lodge garage access. Access to this portion of the development will come from Talcott Lane. Staff has reviewed this application and recommend approval with the conditions as stated in the staff report. Thank you.
Any questions for Kim? All right, thank you.
I do have a couple of questions.
Sorry, go ahead.
I'm looking at a couple of the items on here, for example, 14, 15, and 17, where it's talking about future phases in the future, this might need to be done, or dedicated right turns may be done. Is any of that planned for the future? And I know I may have asked a broad question there, because that covers a couple broad items.
No, that's okay.
But is it planned? Have you heard anything? Because with those type of statements, I'm assuming something's been mentioned or said.
Yeah, those conditions have been in from the very beginning.
Right.
From the very beginning, there was a concern and a need for a traffic study, and so, which was conducted to look at the impact on Highway 70, also to look at the impact at Highway 70 and Highway 64. And so the word LOS, level of services, how efficient, how well can we move traffic through the intersection that we call four-way at 70 and 64? So, because we knew that would be impacted, so the traffic study gave us information about that. There was also concern that we might need to have the right lane on Highway 70 constructed as a part of this development, as well as a traffic signal, which we are getting a traffic signal at the entrance of Union Depot Drive and Highway 70, and also the possibility of the right turn lane being constructed for Union Depot Drive. So what we concluded that we would request is a traffic signal at Highway 70 and Union Depot Drive. And as far as the right turn lane on Highway 70 and the right lane on Union Depot Drive, we would wait to see, once the signal is installed, to see how traffic is functioning after 1B, which is the apartments, go in. So we elected to move on, but also to allow for the provision of these other two items to be done at some point as needed.
Okay. Can I just ask, has that been stipulated as far as a timeframe of when that would be reviewed? Because it's like, well, I'll get you that letter when I can get it to you, or I'll have you that letter by next Tuesday.
It's once the signal is installed that we're going to reassess it. That was the agreement.
Okay, all right, thanks, John.
And Director, if I would, the same comments, the same conditions, items nine and 11. I would like for item 11 of the engineering conditions, item 11 to be deleted. It's redundant from item nine. And item nine would, should be changed to drainage and alley shall be public, which is identical to what we did in the construction.
Okay, thank you. Just a question. David? By delaying what you talked about sounded like a good idea. And who pays for all that down the road if it happens? How does that work? When you, if we come back and it's said that, hey, we need to put the other lane...
The developer will put it in at their own expense.
Okay, thank you. All right, the applicant come forward, please.
I'm Williams Sawtell with Parker Estes and Associates, 3460 Ridge Meadow Parkway, and we would, on behalf of the developer, would request that the, the application be approved as amended.
So you're in agreement with the conditions and comments from the staff?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Any questions for the applicant?
No questions, I move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Commissioners have any comments? Call or roll, please.
Jay Kaufman.
Yes.
Paul Kaiser.
Yes.
David Hunt.
Yes.
Alderman Young.
Yes.
Mandy Young.
Yes.
Curtis Sigler.
Yes.
John Conroy.
Yes, that item carries. Melissa, do we have anybody sign up to speak?
No, we did not.
All right, then we stand adjourned.